Alright, we're live. Alright, we're live on the Rising Texan Podcast. We're waiting for a little bit more live viewers. Today, we got a special interview. The Republican candidate, Alma Solis, Republican candidate for precinct, Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Four, guys. So, we do have three people that are running for Maverick County Commissioner in Precinct Four. Those people that are coming out, there's two Democrats and one Republican. The two Democrats, of course, you guys know Roberto Ruiz, he's going for reelection. And we have a challenger Democrat, Luis C. Fuentes, former mayor. And of course, we have Alma Solis representing the Republican Party. We have a special interview with her scheduled for you guys tonight. So, we got a couple of good viewers on right now, so we're gonna go ahead and bring her up again, guys. Alma Solis, Maverick County Candidate for Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Four. How you doing, Ms. Alma?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. First of all, what I wanna say is congratulations on your, you know, bid to run for Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Four. Of course, it's always welcome and always, you know, good to see competition for these elected positions. That's what you wanna see, you know, as many people as you can kinda get up there or are willing to, you know, take that challenge on to run for elected office. It's always better because I think that's how you can get, you know, a good view of who are a good choice and have the people decide who is best for the community or in this case, Precinct Four, right?
Yes.
So, first of all, I wanna start out, I mean, for those people that may not know, you know, in Precinct Four, of course, they're gonna be the ones voting for you. But for those that don't know you, what's a little bit history of Alma?
Well, I, I'm married, I've been married forty-three years. I worked for the Sheriff Department for almost eleven years, which I loved. I started out with Sheriff Carrera and ended up with Sheriff Schmerber. I love my job, I did meet a lot of people there. I was a record manager for the jail, I took care of all the criminal. I went to court with the inmates, tried to help them, you know, as much as I could. I interacted a lot with the judges and I know a lot of people here in Eagle Pass. I work for the City of Eagle Pass right now, I retired from the sheriff in twenty-eighteen. But I've always worked part-time with the City of Eagle Pass as a toll booth collector. So, I get to see a lot of people and talk to a lot of people and, you know, I enjoy working with a lot of people. So, my thing about running is that Eagle Pass is a nice city, you know, Maverick County's nice, but it needs a lot of cleaning, it needs a lot of things, you know, and I'm gonna have people coming to my house. I want them to come and, you know, feel welcome and my house is always clean and I like to make them feel at home. My, what I wanna do is bring small businesses or, you know, have businesses come to Maverick County and wanna set up shop, you know, work with them, try to work out deals as far as taxes and giving them a break to see how it goes. The streets, fix the streets correctly. You know, where I live, I go down this road and it feels like I'm on a roller coaster. You know, where I go up and down and up and down and up and down. And my question is, why are the streets like that, you know? So, looking to get somebody to do it right instead of fixing the streets and then get a pothole three days later and call someone to come in and put coal fill in and four days later, again, there's a pothole. You know, it's good to invest money and have something done right the first time, at least to make it last, you know? And try to, just like I said, bring businesses here to Eagle Pass. We have to go outside the county most of the times, you know, see a nice park, a bike trail, you know, and just get something nice to come in. The Republican Party, as you know, we're conservative, we don't like to throw money away, we like to get things done the correct way. And that's what I really would like to do, so given the opportunity, you know, I would look into getting all that done. It's time for a change here in Eagle Pass, you know, nobody had run against the Democrat Party. It's the first time that, you know, Republicans are finally saying, okay, we're gonna get involved and tell the people that we're not bad people or this, you know, the Republican Party actually helps and wants to be self-sufficient and bring businesses and help the small business. So, that's my interest really, so I'm hoping people would, you know, take into consideration that we wanna get all that done. We're new people, we got new ideas, you know, that we would like to try out and see how it goes.
No, absolutely, I agree that, I think it's kind of what I was saying in the beginning is that now we get, it's something we haven't seen in a while now. I'm thirty-six years old, so at least in my lifetime here in Maverick County, I don't think I've ever seen a Republican candidate, you know, sign up for a county position. Or I may have been a little bit too young to, you know, know what is going on. But I see that, that this year, we have, you know, a multitude, almost all the positions that, you know, that are available here, almost all of them do have a Republican candidate, you know, that's gonna run, which would be in November, of course. The elections, the primaries, the Democratic and the Republican primaries are coming up soon. It would be the Democrats, of course, first of all, it would be Roberto Ruiz going against Luis C. Fuentes and the winner of the two would be facing you in November. That's correct. And as something, being a part of something, what I wanna say new, because a lot of people around my age, you know, like I said, we're barely seeing this coming up and I think it has to do a lot with the reason of just the national level type of attention that the Republican Party is getting. Now, I guess most people would attribute that to probably Donald Trump, being, you know, one of the most popular in the Republican Party, recently the president. But we're seeing something that Maverick County hasn't seen in a long time or possibly ever. Now, you said earlier that you were a conservative. Now, what does that mean in, what does that, how do you, what is it that you're, the things that, values you live by, the people you go with, that, that's why you call yourself a conservative?
Well, my husband and I are both retired, you know, and we don't wanna pay more taxes, you know? As a conservative, we're for not giving money out so easily, trying to work for what we want instead of hand-me-downs. You know, talking to people, I had an experience last week. I talked to a couple of people and as soon as I say Republican, I get back, oh no, I wouldn't vote Republican because I hate Donald Trump. Excuse me, it's me, not Donald Trump, asking for support. You know, like I said, I loved his policies. I mean, there were policies like, you know, the borders and all that. And that's always been, you know, that the borders, you wanna come in, you come in, you know, the right way. We don't wanna give money out, you know, just to give it out because then we have to pay it back in taxes. So, being that, you know, I would rather bring businesses here and have jobs and to work instead of waiting for hand-me-downs or handouts or whatever you wanna say. But as soon as I say I'm running on the Republican ticket, I get, oh, we hate Donald Trump. You know, the hate for that man is so much, but they never took it to consideration that the economy was a lot better than right now. You know, look at gas, it's so expensive, it wasn't high when he was president. You know, and I'm not talking about Donald Trump, I'm talking about myself. What I wanna see here in Maverick County, you know, go up Ideson Road and see it nice and clean. You know, we, people come from out of town, you know, and look, when they're, when they're going to the casino, the buses, they see all the trash and they see all that, you know? So, they probably just think, oh my God, you know? And the county's nice, I'm not saying that it isn't, you know, downtown Eagle Pass is very nice and clean, but the county needs to be cleaned out and have the streets repaired and, you know, have nice streets. That's what I wanna see. I'm not here to trash anybody, I'm not gonna talk about bad about anybody. I know Mr. Ruiz, Mr. C. Fuentes, I haven't had the pleasure, you know? But I'm gonna give it my best, given the opportunity, I'm gonna give it my best.
Well, I mean, I guess that's a refreshing approach because we do have the candidates for county judge, both Democratic Party, right? They're already starting to kinda sling the mud a little bit.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm not into that, I'm not, I mean, I know Mr. Ruiz and I respect him. You know, when I was at the Sheriff Department, I got to talk to him. I respect him very much and like I said, his personal life, whatever he does, that's none of my business. You know, as well as the other candidates, I've got no reason to badmouth anybody. I wanna be Commissioner because I wanna do a good job. Like I said, I want Maverick County to be a nice county, to have better businesses, you know, to help the small business people and just to keep clean and bring, you know, nice things to Maverick County instead of going to San Antonio. Try to have them here, you know, have the kids go to, let's say, mini golf and play and have a bike trail so they can be out in the bikes and have nice streets where I throw my car out of line a lot of times with hitting the big potholes, you know? So, I wanna get it done right the first time and make it last, you know, at least two years. That's what I'm looking for and like I said, people do know me because I work at the bridge. But they don't, you know, they don't know what party I'm for and stuff like that, so. But yeah, that's what I want.
So, that's something that you've had issues with talking with people, I guess, here lately with your announcement to run on behalf of the Republican Party for Precinct Four Commissioner. So, you've actually gotten kind of backlash from, oh, you're a Republican, Donald Trump.
They bring Donald Trump, they, oh, I hate Donald Trump, I go, what, Scott, you know, that's got nothing to do with what I wanna do, you know? The Republican Party is totally different, I mean, Donald Trump was Republican and was the president, I go, but his ideas were good, everything he had, his policies, but the hate for him was so bad and, you know, you ask, well, why? Well, they say this, no, 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 why is he bad? Why? What did he do wrong? Well, they say that, no, you know, the Republican Party is not about that. The Republican Party is about, you know, helping out people, being a little bit more conservative, not wanting to throw our money away just like that. Like I said, getting the job done right towards gonna last instead of every two weeks calling somebody to go fill the pothole. You know, we wanna save money, we wanna save taxes, we, that's what a conservative is, you know, try to do things right.
No, and I totally agree and we'll maybe touch a little bit directly more on what you feel is, needs to be addressed currently with the situation that we have now in Maverick County. One of the things that I did wanna ask is how you feel about or how would you assist in quote-unquote, the border crisis right now? Because I think not just nationally, but here locally because it's affecting us so much with us being a border town, of course, you know, neighbors still real, neighbors still radio and we see regularly, you know, hundreds at a time. Sometimes they'll come in, you know, groups of twenty, thirty, forty and these things are happening here in our county. So, I guess what I wanna say is where's your stance as far as it goes to, you know, the border? What kind of system or how would you help alleviate that situation that we're having currently?
Well, first of all, we support Border Patrol, we support Homeland Security, we support the police department. You know, we're all for everybody's welcome, you know, there's a lot of people in line waiting to come in the correct way. I believe that that wall should be finished, I'm sorry. You know, us being taxpayers, they say, well, you know, we're gonna come in, they're gonna come in and who's gonna support them? I mean, our taxes are gonna go up higher and nobody gives you nothing for free, you know? I am for closed borders, you know, and I am for welcoming people that come in the correct way. You know, there's a line of people waiting and it's costing them a lot of money, you know? Yet they're letting all these people come across, all that costs money. You know, all that costs money, they're putting border patrolmen in danger, their, our law enforcement. I would like to get more funding for the Sheriff Department, you know, to have better training, to get more deputies, you know? If you're in El Indio and then something happens in Camado, you're putting the deputy's lives also, you know, where they have to go from El Indio to Camado. So, I would like to get more funding and more training for law enforcement here in Maverick County. Like I said, I work for the Sheriff Department and the sheriff is a great person, but sometimes we're short-staffed. We need, we need more police, like I said, I'm against defunding, I'm against whatever, you know, it's going on right now. But as far as people coming in illegally, I don't, I don't like it. I mean, I would try to get somebody to back us up or help us or do something.
Awesome, awesome. Now, what problems do you feel, maybe not necessarily just in Precinct Four, but, you know, I guess including Precinct Four, that our county, Maverick County, is experiencing right now that you can see that you will be able to help out with? Or what kind of situations do you see? I know you mentioned the roads, I think you were kind of on to public safety. What other problems do you see around our county that need to be addressed and will be addressed if you are elected for Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Four?
Well, the whole county needs a good cleanup, you know? We need to clean it, make it look where people are gonna come in and say, man, this, this little town is really nice, you know? Maybe if we come down, I'm for negotiating with businesses that wanna come in, you know, big businesses to negotiate, you know, not to take advantage right away and say, well, we want this, this and this. You know, negotiate like taxes, you know, set up shop, try it out, see if it works, you know, then we can renegotiate again and get them to come in. For me, to tell you the truth, it's clean, for it to be clean. When you come into Eagle Pass, you know, you see all the white bags flying all over the place, you know? And they tell you, you know, we're gonna go pick the trash, you leave the trash in front of your house. They say, one day, two weeks later, they come pick it up. And all that, you know, the houses, I grew up in Illinois, even the tiniest house and the ugliest house is always nice and clean. You know, very clean, everything organized, everything just, just clean. To me, that's very important and like I told you, doing things right, not be spending money just to be spending money, hey, call him, call him, do this, do that, no, have it done the right way the first time and avoid all that. But most of all, like I said, is trying to help the county bring businesses in.
Now, what, whenever you speak of businesses, is there a certain industry that you're interested in trying to attract or is?
Well, like Hobby Lobby, Sam's, you know, stores that we have to go all the way to San Antonio to do, bring like park, a nice park where we can take the kids, have a bike trail to where you can go out in the afternoon and go on the bike trail, you know, and not be in danger of getting hit or running over. And basically to where people can go out and do something, we don't have anything here in Eagle Pass to where you can enjoy yourself. When they have that market at the lake, it's really nice, you know, people go out there and buy and all that and that's what we need. We need to keep the money here locally with the small businesses, you know, to help them out. But I would like to attract, you know, box stores, you know, to where they can come in and like a Hobby Lobby or, you know, Sam's Club. We need another Walmart, we need another HEB, it's, you know, something like that. Try to see if we could attract those businesses to Eagle Pass.
Now, I mean, I think Eagle Pass is, it should have been a lot bigger than it currently is right now. I think it's been held back a lot, I don't know your feelings on that. But I mean, everything's good, bringing industry, business is good. Bring it into Maverick County where we are, you know, one of the poorest counties still in Texas. And that's it, we have a casino within our county. So, I mean, it's hard to kinda think, how can that happen being that we have a casino in our backyard, right? Now, specifically with Precinct Four, what are issues and problems that maybe you have encountered in going out and talking with constituents of Precinct Four and what is their, you know, what is the need of Precinct Four constituents that you've understood so far?
Well, you know what, I'm gonna be truthful with you. I just got my map to see what Precinct Four, because they redid it, they redid the precincts. So, now it's Precinct Four A, Four B, Four C and Four D. And, you know, one side is by El India Road, I think Ideson Road and Chula Vista, Loma Bonita and that is part of Precinct Four. And then as you come on this other side, the north side is, it's different. So, I have to look to see what, I'm gonna, I don't know, like I said, I'm not a politician, I've never gotten into this. But I need to look at that and go and present myself, like I said, I'm gonna go present myself. And once I know what, how much of Precinct Four is mine, then I'll look at the problems and hopefully you'll give me the opportunity to bring it back and bring you what I really see wrong in Precinct Four.
No, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Now, coming in to this, you mentioned you're not a politician.
I've never been.
And you've never been. What was it that, you know, inspired you or what was it that motivated you this time around to run? I mean, was it, you know, there had to be kind of something that, you know? Everybody's always met with something whenever they're trying to do something new, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, like I told you, I grew up in Illinois and I was on the Board of Trustees. I lived in a village that's under six thousand people, so it's, it's like a commissioner, but it's called Board of Trustees. And I went in there because they nominated me and because I was Hispanic, you know, I spoke Spanish and English and we have, we had people that were Mexican that didn't speak English and, you know, bringing up the problems in the village. Well, unfortunately, when I got elected, we were moving back to, we were moving back and forth. We were what you call snowbirds, my husband's a native Eagle Passan and he wanted to come down in the winter. So, I had to tell him I couldn't do it because my husband wanted to come back and forth, you know? He got laid off, we came down for four months and then we would go back and he would go back to work. So, being there, you know, what, my attention was the streets, pothole streets and, and stuff like that. And people would ask, why don't they do this, why don't they do that? And I would go and say, well, people are asking, you know? And here in Maverick County, I had the opportunity to talk to people and they said, well, being that you like to talk and you know a lot of people, like I said, because I work at the bridge, I've seen a lot of people, why don't you go ahead and try, you know, to run for Commissioner? And like I said, I'm retired, I have the time and I would like to give it my best. Like I said, you know, I'm here to listen to people, you know, what the problem is. I know we've been complaining a lot about the streets, that's what I hear a lot and what I see and just plain, you know, there's a lot of garbage we need to clean, a lot of, especially Ideson Road. They need a lot of help keeping that area nice and clean. Loma Bonita and all those need a lot, you know, if we're gonna pick up the trash when we say we're going to, even if it's a day, you know, that goes by or two days, but I mean, I've seen trash there that's been there for years.
Oh, wow.
I got a ticket, I lived in a small town and I got a ticket because my son-in-law's tires was on the grass. So, I got a twenty-five dollar ticket for the tire being on the grass. It was inside my property by my garage, but the tire was on the grass. And over that, over there, you can't, you know, park on the grass or anything, so. And like the towns were very nice and clean, we can do that here in Eagle Pass to where businesses are gonna come and look around and say, you know what, this is nice and clean. We have the loop, we got some, you know, that we can try to attract businesses and put them on the loop instead of Bibb Street all the time.
Yeah, because we do see, yeah, that's like prime real estate here in Eagle Pass.
Everything's on Bibb Street, you know, when we have a beautiful loop over here, Second Street, everything, I mean, it's so nice. We could spread out a little bit.
Yeah.
But trying to, you know, try to get businesses to come to Eagle Pass, giving him, you know, good incentives, you know? Come in, try it out, we'll work on the taxes and things like that instead of telling them, well, it's gonna cost you this, this and that and that's your problem. Scare them off. Hobby Lobby was gonna come to Eagle Pass and it went to Uvalde, I don't know the reason, but, you know, we lost out. So, stuff like that.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, that makes total sense. I do know that for some time Eagle Pass was really restricted with their tax abatement policies and they couldn't, you know? There was no big businesses attracted or no one wanted to come. Now, I think it's loosened up to where we're seeing a little bit of more industry come in to Eagle Pass. But there hasn't, there hasn't been, you know, the boost that we've all been expecting probably for the past ten years or so that we keep on hearing from the local governments. One of the things that I did wanna ask because it's, it's a hot, hot topic, I guess, when it comes to Commissioners Court. I don't know if you saw the newspaper, the Gram and it had this yum-yum tree in the back and it had, you know, I guess a so-called empire that was built and where I'm getting with that is that, are you, well, we kinda wanna ask because of our viewers, are you a type of person that's just gonna kinda, you know, you get elected and you go with the flow? Or are you for an independent type of voice or how, what are your, gonna be your characteristics if you get elected to Commissioners Court?
If I don't agree with it, I'm not gonna do it, I'm a taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer and I wanna know where my money's going and who it's going to. So, no, I won't be a yes man, if that's what you're asking me.
I mean, basically, yeah.
I know that if, if, God willing, I do win if I'm gonna have four people against me, you know? I'm gonna try to give it my best, I really am, you know? Like I said, I'm a taxpayer and that's my money that they're working with and doing all that. So, I will have questions or I will just don't agree. I mean, if it's, if it's not right, it's not right. But like I say, a lot of times, if there's only one Republican and four Democrats and they're gonna get knocked upon you, there's not a lot I can do but say, no, I don't agree with it. So, I mean, you gotta think about that, you know, it's your money that they're working with, it's for you, it's for the county, not for me, but for the county. And like you say, that businesses want to come, yeah, but if you negotiate, you know, if you negotiate with the taxes a little bit is better than nothing. You know, because if I wanna set up shop and they're gonna tell me, well, we want an arm, a leg and half your eye, take it or leave it. Instead of saying, well, we'll take a little toe and then if it, if it works better, I'll take a little foot. You know what I'm saying, you have to negotiate and keep it here. You can't scare businesses and say, nobody, they want a lot, you know? And I think that would work, you know, that's the way you attract people, you know, cutting them breaks and giving them breaks to see if it's gonna work out or not.
Yeah, and I think that, like I said, mentioned earlier, that we have seen some industry, but it's mostly within city limits that we see the type of growth and, and to understand, it's not a growth as in the city getting bigger, it's just, you know, there's more industry, more businesses coming in. But you don't see that same kind of growth rate in the county that you do with the city.
Exactly, exactly, yes.
Everybody wants to be in Bibb Street, right?
Yeah, exactly, everybody wants to be on Bibb Street. No, come on, we got a lot of land, we, I mean, over here towards where McCoys's and all that, we got all that property. I mean, I don't know whose it is, but, you know, the Loop and Fifty-seven, there's a lot of places for sale and stuff like that. But it's like I'm telling you, it's on an arm and a leg and half an eye. And businesses are looking to set up and see if it's gonna work or not, you know? There's a lot of stores that come in that don't have, don't make the money they thought they were gonna make and just close and leave.
Yeah, yeah, and it does, I don't wanna say it tends to happen, but it does happen here in Eagle Pass where businesses come in.
I can't hear you.
Hello?
No.
Hello, did it go off?
Let me see, let me put, I can't hear anything.
Hello? Hello? Yeah?
Now I can hear you, yes.
Sorry about that, I don't know what happened, but what I was gonna, oh man, I forgot what track that I was.
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 you're good. Well, one of the things I wanted to. No, 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 you're good. Uh, well, well, one of the things I wanted to uh bring up, circling back on the Commissioners Court. Is there any uh particular things that you've seen maybe in the past year that Commissioners Court have passed or or that have done that? You know, y- you have disagreed with uh maybe in the past year, past couple of years?
Well, since I was with the sheriff, I went once and? They were so rude. I mean? Not everybody, but us, you know? Um? They treated people, you know, very rudely. And uh? The way that people were getting treated, I was very close to standing up. You know, and saying something about it. I've seen, you know, things that you wanna say, no, this is wrong, no, this is right, but you can't say anything. So I've never been to Commissioners Court, I went maybe twice. And what I saw wasn't pleased, I'll tell you one thing. Talk about rudeness, talk about uh treating people with no respect whatsoever, you know, when you're in a, when you're in public office. I have uh? What you call customer service. I'm very polite, I don't disrespect anybody, like I said. Going in, I'm not gonna bad mouth or speak bad about any anybody, you know, Mr. Ruiz, Mr. Fuentes, whoever. I'm just selling myself on what I wanna do. Not trashing people, you know, people know everything here in Eagle Pass. I don't have to, I'm not gonna bring out anything, you know, well, he does this, he does that, that's none of my business. I wanna get elected to do my job and do a good job and do what's good for the community, the county. But yeah, the thing that I've seen at Commissioners Court, like I said, I haven't been there that much, I went a couple of times when I was with the sheriff's office. Just rudeness.
Oh, wow, uh, and this is, uh, I guess, uh, you were with the sheriff um up to twenty eighteen?
Yes, I was, I started working with Sheriff Herrera back in two thousand eight, April of two thousand eight. And then I went with Sheriff Smurber and I worked with him till December twenty eighteen. So I was, it was ten years and eight months that I worked with the Sheriff Department. And like I said, the sheriff is a wonderful per- person. You know, I was uh, the reason I retired was because my husband had been retired seven years and was tired of being by himself. That's the only reason? I retired because I missed my job, I missed working with the the community. You know, I would go to Walmart and they would say, uh, Miss Solis, Miss Solis, and I would turn around and I didn't know who was talking to him. But they would say, I'm doing better, I'm doing better, you know, thank you. So, but yeah, I mean, I love uh the county, working for the county. It's always been, I've never had any bad experiences or anything. I just wanna get, like I said, improve the 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 county. Make it look better, make it look cleaner, try to attract businesses, fix the streets. And whatever else, like I said, I don't know. Uh, what I have to go to to take a couple of classes. When I started at the sheriff's office, I was blind. I didn't know what I, you know? But I started learning, working with the girls from the district and the county, and everybody was awesome, everybody helped me. And when I left the sheriff department, they were calling me for help. So, yeah, I was a administrator for DPS and doing the sieges and and all that, and I learned a lot. I learned a lot and now working for the city, I'm a toll collector and I enjoy working because I enjoy meeting people, meeting new people.
Hmm.
But you know, I'm gonna, once I get my precinct, I am gonna go and and introduce myself. And uh see what's going on and and hear what complaints are for my constituents, like you say. I'm just getting ready.
That that's great, and 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 what uh, what kind of activities have you done so far? Ha- has there been any um? You know, block walking, any announcements, uh?
We're gonna start, I'm trying to get my, I'm trying to get my banners, a couple of banners, and I'm trying to get my shirt with my Republican logo and uh trying to get things and? I'm gonna start walking, like I said, as soon as I see whi- which my streets are, I already got the map, I just can zoom in to see what my area is. But you know, my neighbors, I have very nice neighbors, you know, and uh they're all willing to work with me. Uh, one of my neighbors are at Customs. And they're ready, ready to back me up and uh my other neighbors, you know, are important people that live here in Eagle Pass, you know? Uh, unfortunately, uh, they're not on my party, they're uh? They're not Republicans, but they're very helpful, you know, they're giving me pointers and stuff like that, so that's good to, you know? The judges and stuff like that, they know me and they're all congratulating me, you know, that to do the? Good job, and like I said, I'm gonna give it my best. Given the opportunity, I'm gonna give it all my best.
That's awesome, and and how uh supportive it has been, has the Republican Party been as far as, you know, uh assisting you to register? And relations with the with the Maverick County Republican Party?
They're awesome. They're like family. They treat you like you've known them for years. They're they're great. You know, they're they're great, they're there, everybody's there to help you, you know, everybody, you get questions, they're always available. Which is really nice, you know, like I, like you said, we're gonna be in the, we're gonna be on the ballot in the primaries, but? Our time is gonna be the general election. So we're gonna be working hard, you know, all summer. You know, like I said, I'm gonna start walking and um introducing myself and ask, you know? What they think about the precinct, what's the what's needed, mostly needed here in in the precinct and? Then I'll give you an update on what the concerns are.
Awesome. Well, I I mean, uh, I thank you for your time and I appreciate, you know, uh, the interview, I know, uh, we just uh got in contact today, so? It was rather quick that we set this up, so it's much, much appreciated. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that you would like to uh discuss or, you know, a message that you'd like to send out there to the viewers?
Um, just, you know, like I said, that I would appreciate their support, you know? To, I know there's a lot of Republicans here in Maverick County, uh, when we went to the Greg Abbott um? Uh, meeting that they had here, it was awesome. There is a lot of Republicans here in Maverick County. So I'll go out and introduce myself, Democrat, Republican, we can all work together, you know, cuz we're all for the same thing. We're all for uh fixing the streets, keeping the city clean, you know? Saving our money and putting it to good work and um hopefully they'll support me, they'll like my ideas. And um? That's all I can say, that I'm hoping that they support me and uh allow me? You know, to work something different, give other people a chance, you know, the people that are? Have been there, have been there a long time. I've been here fourteen years and I've seen the same people. So it's time to give new people that have no ideas, you know, a chance to prove what we can do, you know? But thank you so much, I really appreciate you uh giving me this interview and I greatly appreciate it.
No problem, we had a decent amount of uh viewers and there's a lot of people that, you know, come in and view it afterwards, so uh? But again, we would like to invite you, I know that uh your role um as the Republican Party candidate. Um, you won't be elected, of course, you'll be on the ballot in the primaries and the Republican primaries, but as there's no other Republican candidate for precinct four. Uh, your actual election's not gonna be till probably uh?
The November, yeah, the November, yes, and uh? Uh, hopefully, you know, they're, we wanna keep uh the Republican Party strong. You know, we wanna support it and bring back everything we used to have, the low gas prices and uh? Be able to buy meat or we can afford to eat meat and um, you know, get rid of a lot of the mandates and? Hopefully, we we uh hope and pray that we have a red wave in twenty twenty-two and take the Senate and the House back to? Go back to our normal lives where we could afford to pump gas and? Go buy groceries and stuff like that.
No, absolutely, I I couldn't agree with you more on that part. Um, well, thank you very much, Ms. Alma Solis. She is the uh precinct four Maverick County Commissioner candidate from the Republican Party. We appreciate her time and we thank her for, you know, taking time from her schedule to be here. And answer a little bit of questions, you know, an introduction to um? Uh, who is Ms. Alma Solis, you know, the Republican candidate for precinct four? Uh, we hope to see you, you know, a little bit closer to the? To your actual election or possibly, you know, sometime after um? The Democratic primaries are over, so we can go ahead and interview you again, once you, you know, kind of? Uh, been uh uh taking care of your activities in your precinct.
We're gonna have a meet and greet, you know, the Republicans, uh, uh, candidates, we're gonna have a meet and greet. We're trying to work on that, get the date so we can meet people, you know, and uh introduce ourselves and uh give a little bit of our history. You know, hopefully soon, we're working on the dates, so as soon as we have it, I'll call you and I'll let you know, so you can?
Put it out there. Announce that, awesome. All right, well, uh, uh, again, thank you very much, Ms. Alma Solis, uh, it was a pleasure having you in our uh, you know, podcast to interview you. And uh let our viewers and uh and uh potential, you know, other viewers that are gonna be watching this? As an introduction to who Alma Solis is, uh, the Republican candidate for Maverick County Commissioner Precinct Four.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ruiz, thank you.
Thank you, you have a nice night.
Thank you, God bless you and God bless America.
Guys, uh, thank you for joining, we, that was, as we mentioned, Ms. Alma Solis. Uh, she is the Republican candidate for Maverick County Commissioner for Precinct Four. Now, she's the only Republican running for precinct four, again, we do have two other candidates that are Democrats. And they will be uh uh going against each other, uh, heads up? In the Democratic primaries, which would be Roberto Ruiz, who is the the current commissioner that will be running for reelection. And then we have former Mayor Luisi Fuentes that is uh challenging for that uh Democratic nomination. Uh, the winner of the two will then uh be having another election in the November ballot when it is um? The Democrats against the primary tick, uh, Democrats against the Republicans. Um, whoever's left on the ticket. So uh we wanna thank everybody uh beforehand, thank you very much for joining us, we appreciate? Uh, the time y'all take to uh join us on a short notice, especially on a short notice? Interview that we have, but uh we had the opportunity and and you know that we like to? Interview potential uh elected officials as well as elected officials? To get to understand and get to kind of know uh some of these people that are running for office. Um, because uh at the end of the day, we uh, the people, um, viewers here, myself, um, you know, our community, it? We are the ones who elect the people who? Make the decisions on, you know, how money is spent in our community, how public money is handled. So it's very important for us to recognize that we are in the position of a of a? I guess the managers or the boss or we are the ones that hire, you know, um? Uh, I don't wanna say politicians, but these people that we elect by the vote that we cast on in these elections. So it's very important to understand that and to want to know who the people are that are running for these positions. Because you don't wanna get into a situation where, you know, you go up to a ballot, you go to vote? And you don't know anybody on that ticket. You wanna get to familiarize yourself with who these candidates are, uh? Regardless of a party, in my, in my opinion, whether it's Democrat or or uh or Republican. Um, again, uh, I don't really swing either way myself, I I I do? I would call myself a a conservative person as a conservative, conservative values. But as far as parties, you know, uh, to me, I think we need to get to know the person. Because that uh can potentially, you know, um? Make it or break it if you vote for them or not. Again, guys, thank you very much for joining us on this podcast, uh, we interviewed Alma Solis, the Republican? Uh, candidate for Maverick County Commissioner Precinct Four, and this was the Rising Texan.